This conference will now be recorded.
All to order the minus select board at six P M on January fourth, twenty twenty four. We have all three members present here in town hall. So is the town administrator. Item two is the town administrator position. I'm sorry for the delay. I don't know what caused it, but Mary is a little slow in getting us the questionnaire. I have drafted my response, but I haven't gotten it through.
I sent mine in on Tuesday.
I sent mine in.
Okay, I I drafted and I actually emailed her, I think it was today, asking her what the time when she thought would be if we had all of our stuff in. It's good to know that you both did, but I did get a responder. It's not really a vacation responder, but she's worked.
She's off and not, yeah.
Yeah, with her flag. So I will send mine in as soon as possible and then hopefully we'll have a draft for next week.
And I did have this sense from the earlier email that her associate is the one that's actually pulling that stuff together, like under her supervision. So I, when I sent mine, I I responded, replied, they all got it? Yeah, so I would recommend that. That way, even if she's out of the office, he'll get it.
She also mentioned that he was gonna call each board member.
I have not yet. But he might wanna, I, like, if I were him, I'd wait till I heard from all three people. I'd put it together and then I'd talk to people because he's gonna wanna have a sense of where we're, like, on the same page and where he needs clarification. I would imagine that's what I'd do if I were him. So we may not hear back until after, a couple of days after.
Yeah, well, I'll try to get mine in tomorrow. Okay, well, so we'll come back to that hopefully next week. Some update. The next item is the special town meeting very draft warrants.
I like the very draft wording.
I was curious about the school committee. Is that for this year?
She never put in any of her time for November, June through November. Sorry, November twenty twenty two to June twenty twenty three.
She got a lot of them.
In November, yeah.
Can you still get paid for last year?
She was sent the instructions.
Okay, um, is it, do we have a policy or anything on back pay? Yeah, well, I think it's our fault, but I mean, like, if I worked, and I'm not, I don't know the details of the situation other than your brief explanation right now, but like, if I worked twenty hours, you know, this week and I just didn't put it in my time card and it was my fault that it's not in there and I come back two years later to work twenty hours, there must be some kind of, is there a place to ask?
I don't know if there is a statute of limitations on that stuff.
But even if it's an employee's.
Even if it's an authority.
I would assume there is.
You'll never win that one.
I don't even wanna try it.
Yeah, I I understand the responsibility falls on the individual, but if they put in their time, that's what they say they've had and they have to pay.
I'd say the only other thing you could do if it was a frequent problem, which I don't have to send it necessarily is, but that at a certain time, once a year or twice a year, at a certain time, you could check to see if anybody is submitting. Um, and and send out a notice, like, you know, that you have not submitted hours for the following month. Please be advised that the town cannot pay you if you do not submit your hours. Where, in other words, just put them on notice that we have noticed. I don't know if it's worth doing that or if it's, like, gonna be a pain in the butt to do it and then in the end, if people don't, they don't, but it's the only thing I could think of.
Well, we did notice when we were going through the accounting reports that a couple of people hadn't been paid at all for the fiscal year.
Twenty twenty three.
For this current fiscal year.
Right, twenty, fiscal twenty one. Wow, who else?
The, another elected stipend, just from the tree order.
Okay. He has a sense.
Yeah, he has sense and she has sense.
She has sense.
I think I saw her on the most recent one. So, but that's a question like, and I know that we have at least one other position that doesn't accept their elected stipend.
And the two board of health members.
So what do we do in, and I, and I don't expect this to happen, except it kinda just did happen. What do we do when someone comes and says we didn't get paid? Do we need, like, a written statement saying we don't?
I don't know. Yes, regal council. I mean, I don't know.
I know, I'm not sure with employment law, like.
Yeah, but I mean, employment law always falls on the employee, you know, they, you know. They're on their side. You just can't do that because.
Well, the question is really what, what does, what do we wanna do with it as well as what's the law?
Um, and maybe you set up a system and you start automatically paying them, I don't know.
It is a little bit more unique still because it's that elected stipend. It's not really a typical employer employee relationship.
Or an hourly, and I think sometimes people are like, I don't even want the town to pay me, but I'm not gonna say anything about it, so I just won't submit kind of thing.
Yeah, but you probably should be coming in writing.
Because we can't, we don't wanna end up with this. And we had another one a couple of years ago where we had a dispute that was eight years old or something between the town and a board member. There were just.
I remember the vague, I don't remember the specifics. I never mentioned it.
I think you were on the board or it was like before you were on the board or you were just on the board.
I think it was right before I was on the board and it was like concerned somebody had happened like three or four years ago.
At least.
Yeah.
Yeah, there was a disagreement on whether they were overpaid or not.
Yeah.
And so, anyway, and then because of the town meeting, you know, we have to do a special vote. So anyways, I understand.
But it's a good question whether, I mean, I don't know that, we can't not pay them, but what we could do is put in places, things that where we're notifying people who haven't taken the money. That we're aware they haven't taken the money and that they at least either submit it so we can pay them or send us a letter saying they don't wanna be paid. I don't, one or the other.
Um, one thousand from free cash for transportation operations preparatory of the year bill.
That's for compost removal.
The warrants.
Yeah, I don't know what the amount will be. I I think about seven hundred maybe. I'll I'll get that, but just because of that. For the extra, yeah.
It's free cash or?
Yes, uh, well, um, it's been submitted. They haven't certified it yet, but Eric said it's because of the Christmas holiday, I'm talking to the street and some colleagues.
Okay.
Like, check them out. Four thirty five?
Four, four sixty, four, four forty four, something like that.
Does anyone else have any questions on the very draft?
Um, there's no number for community center operations?
Um, no, so when we met with them during their budget meeting, uh, they weren't aware. I think we're figuring about what fifteen hundred.
Yeah, it might have gone a little north of that. I pulled that sheet up. I was gonna call one and see where they left.
Okay.
Nothing against them for the rest of the year and then.
And the majority, that the other transfer section operations, as I recall, is, you'd hurt the addition error from the previous one, but that was only about ten K. The majority of it is because of the, the compactor that they tore up instead of letting us buy, followed by the rental, followed by all the additional uh, hauling due to lack of a compactor under a toward the student.
Is there, is any of it due to increased tonnage?
No, I remember reviewing it the other day. Yes, because we didn't have the compactor, so it looks like there's more tonnage. I didn't even look at the M S W. But I was focused on hauls. I was focused on the paper. I'll go and look at those numbers again because I am curious about it.
Well, what's, how is it gonna look next year?
That's why I'm gonna go look at it. Um, there, so there's a bunch of things.
So there's a compactor in that one, or in that one.
We're hoping that we're getting one, trying to buy one, yeah, um, so that we can stop renting it to, what is it, seven fifty one?
Something like that. Uh, we didn't actually put it in there. We talked about it. You guys wanted, um, what we need.
It was in those spreadsheets. You'd be sending it there with that.
Yeah, we have compactor thirty five thousand on there, but Jim is calling, he hasn't heard back from Roger yet on whether we could do, like, a lease to own or, you know, like, that kind of option. He hasn't heard back.
Okay.
Um, so, you know, I'm, I guess I need to call it out of transition community meetings that we could talk through some of this stuff, but I have concerns over the long-term situation because the costs are just, and it's not just us, right? Everybody's costs are going up. Jim and I and Melissa had a great conversation the other day about the possibility of, um, trying to get the cost of the compost part down. Jim thinks he could actually build a bigger bin that would be a little more animal proof and he's thinking about it, um, and he's gonna reach out to see if it's possible we could, we might, if our people could be taking it maybe only once a week instead of three pickups to make sure that the bears don't get into it. Down to Meadow Farm or something, but but it's all up in there. It's just.
How much do we, uh, does it pay for compost a week? Is it a hundred dollars a week?
It's like only, like.
Yeah, well, a thousand dollars for two months is.
It was thousand for two months.
That's crazy. That's crazy.
I know.
I mean, I, we should throw them in the garbage.
It was mostly because they increased it to three times a week, right? It's the, the frequency of pickups, right? So it's about a ton a month. So it is a little more expensive. It's not hugely more expensive than putting in the M S W, but it is a little more expensive. But I'd like, I'd like us to keep composting, but I'd like to get that number down. And so we're looking at ways to get the, the number down. When, like, and I raised the possibility of having more containers because I thought the pickups were because of the volume. It is a volume issue, but it's also a quality issue. It shouldn't be a problem now.
How clean do they think that the compost is coming out? Like, why can't we get a local gardener or landscaper to pick it up?
I mean, I think that's what it comes down to and I don't totally answer the why. I mean, this.
I would think the main reservation would be if it's.
Contaminated.
Contaminated. Um, I think it's also a question of whether anyone is willing to do the physical work of hauling it for what they get back for selling it and that there's just no one, I mean, if you, if you can find someone else that's willing to do the hauling for use at their own place. I mean, Ghul Farm, I guess some of the D E P regu, what I recall was that they said they had to stop doing it due to a change in the D E P regulations. Maybe there were other considerations as well. I don't know.
Yeah, I think they were gonna have to do testing or something. There was, it was gonna be labor intensive and possibly have some cost to put one, that's why they.
A hundred and twenty dollars a week.
Right, so if we could, if he can build us a container that would be bear proof and our own people can do a once a week delivery to someplace, that would be a significant cost savings, but that only works if we can figure out a way to do it.
But it's still an hour plus.
With the truck.
With the truck.
But it's gonna be way less than what, what we're paying, you know?
Well, if you get, if they could, um, like, move it twice a month, it might be a week.
That's what he's thinking.
Yeah, then it would be worth it, but if they could move it every week for a hundred and twenty.
Well, the hundred and twenty is what we're paying now for three pickups.
Three pickups.
Right, because they're doing it every day. They're picking up, uh, every day.
They can't leave it Saturday and Sunday.
I think, I think they'll.
Anyway, yeah.
Animals are getting, but whatever, I don't wanna drag that.
Dead horse, but I also hate to spend a hundred and twenty dollars a week.
You're not wrong. Me neither. That's why we're.
But.
It's a terrible phrase, isn't it?
I almost said that word.
Yeah.
Okay, um, I'm seriously gonna try to think. I'm just that happy to discuss.
Do, I, you're well pleased. Any thoughts you have, I would. But I am worried about the M S W costs going forward as well, by the way. I don't, it's a separate issue, but it's still real.
Okay, um, we'll come back to, especially, wait, actually, there wasn't.
Special.
Here are some dates, because I have some that.
Also, the I T number, because this is a different number that was on the last one I looked at. This is ten one, oh, but that's for special, not for.
That's just to get us through the rest of the year.
And that's just an estimate, you know, until we meet again.
Yeah, I was gonna take what he gave us and put it in the spreadsheet.
Do we have a, a number back?
Well, we have, we got something from him yesterday, but he was supposed to send you another thing this morning, but maybe by email.
We did a follow-up, just asking if we had any questions. We said we probably wouldn't meet until next week.
Yeah, we'll have to get a meeting together. I went, I, she printed out the, like, prepaid contract, but now we know, we have a short-term plan and a long-term plan. So, so the numbers for the long-term drop, I see. But I, we just started working on it today.
Well, hopefully you guys will give us a briefing on this at some point.
We will, now that we got it from yesterday.
Uh, what about the last Saturday in February? I think it'd be good to have a few weeks to, uh, maybe get the bylaws on here, do different things.
That'd be the twenty fourth. That works for me. It gives us a chance to finalize all this stuff for the, the ad and maybe have at least another conversation about, um, whatever we need to, to, to get, to go to them to see what, whether they'll, I mean, the, the salary you want, I mean, it's gonna involve a couple more conversations. And maybe get better numbers. Well, we don't need better numbers for the I T stuff till A T M, right?
No, we need, we're gonna get us through the rest of the year.
No, but I mean, that, that bigger number was.
Bigger number, right.
A T M, okay. Um, what else would we need to get? Final before that? The bylaws is gonna be a big one, right?
Yeah, if we can pull it off. And I just don't think that extra time is gonna hurt us and I don't see any of this as being immediately urgent.
What about, um, the, we have a meeting with the planning board next week?
The lab and that, I think, today?
I think that's.
I don't know how many gallons.
Yeah, I think it's next Wednesday or Thursday.
Thursday, but my question about that is that's the.
It's not supposed to go on that.
Is it supposed to be specifically about the solar overlay thing or is it something else?
No, it's like a master plan.
It's like a master plan.
Ah, okay.
So what time is that gonna be? Seven?
Seven P M, eleven eleven.
Yeah.
Um, okay, do, do we need to add to that agenda what they're, whether they'll be having hearings on the overlay thing so we can get that done for the work here?
Yeah, I think Peter's not having, but we can add it to the agenda and double check.
Because we can't, you know, we don't answer the agenda, we can't bring it up, so, right?
Yeah.
I mean, I just wanna hear that they have a plan, that's all.
I would go the last Saturday in February, even the first Saturday in March, and I would just also check on the availability of the Saturday before the last one in February. So just so that we have the.
Three options? And we're thinking the fire hogs, right?
Yeah.
Two seventeen, Chris won't be here.
Okay, so two twenty four, three two?
I see one. That was my thought.
Do you have any preference, Frank? I, I don't care either way. Why one? Just warmer?
I think that's what we've been doing for.
Yeah, I seem to recall that also.
For a few years, I mean.
I mean, not that necessarily we have to, but I don't think. Yeah, okay, fair.
The, on that, our, I guess, our department capital, that's the warrants we've given them. We've had two meetings with the committee and we're gonna go ahead and I'm gonna go back to close the door to start having drafts and so we would need to put that money out of the warrant to make it acquired till lease agreement.
Right. And we have a meeting with them next week.
Right.
On what, Wednesday?
Yeah.
Something like that.
It'll be Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, and the meeting next Tuesday, which we don't necessarily have to, we met.
I mean, we might wanna, if we hear back from Collins.
Yes, that just seems quick if I'm gonna get it to them tomorrow, which is Friday.
Oh, my goodness, that's true.
The holiday week.
Very true.
So probably gonna be the weekend after that, especially if he's gonna call each member.
Yeah.
The holidays did.
I know.
Put into in about three weeks, even though they only lasted one. So it goes.
Yeah, I mean, it's one week, but it's. Are we, are we gonna try and do the recall again?
Um, we could. I can see that also being going to annual town meeting. I think if we do the bylaws, we, we should.
Skip it.
Uh, just stick to the bylaws. I would really like to do the bylaws.
Me too.
Maybe, you know, at this point. Um, I told, I had told David that I was gonna look at it. I didn't, I just thought.
Have you said, do we have copies? I don't, I don't know if he sent me one. I mean, I do have.
No, I think he just sent it to me, but maybe you should just ask him if he can send it to you and Frank.
Okay, I can do that.
So everyone.
Everyone has a copy. I'd like to, I mean, I, you know, he showed the, the parts of them ages ago, but I've never looked at the whole thing, so.
Yeah, I haven't pulled up right now. Uh, I mean, it's just a huge, huge thing, even with it streamlined.
I know. And there's a lot of commentary on there as well, which there needs to be to explain it all, but still.
I'm not in any rush. I mean, so it has to be a special, a recall special act.
And even after we pass it, there's no guarantee the.
You have to.
Let's say you should drop the ball last time and they might drop the ball again, but I still think that it makes sense to have a, a way to get someone who's not performing their duties. Out of the process. Let us hope that it never requ, we're never needed to use it.
Right.
All right.
Okay, so we'll come back to this next week, but.
But we have some.
If, if we put it for the end of February, we'll, you know, be sure to design it in the first week of February, latest in the second week of February.
Right, two, we need two weeks, right?
Minimum important we're supposed to do. Earlier the better.
Yeah, I don't have a problem with doing, um, I couldn't remember. I know that annual town is seven, but N S D M.
Um, Melissa, town administrator, select board budget.
And just kind of, you know, some of those, I, um, yeah, office assistant, the town administrator salary.
I think we should leave those as is for now. And if anything, I mean, call them please, but if anything changes between now and the next few weeks, few months, then we'll take it as it comes, but I think it'd be premature to change it now.
What about the shared human resources? Nineteen oh sixteen was what they had it at for this year twenty four.
I think we can definitely drop it. But, and it should be renamed Human Resources Consulting.
What are we assuming it's gonna be?
Well, it really is a question of how much do you wanna be able to use it as a resource? And I would guess ten thousand. That's a guess.
Now, she, when Dawn asked her in the meeting, what was it, was it last, the last one? What she thought it would cost, she gave it kind of a ten thousand cap, but seemed to think it would be significantly less than that. But that's just for that cert. That's not for all their services.
I think she said that was if you guys had hired.
Oh, absolutely.
Right, but she said you were getting a break because you were paying hourly.
So what they're usually doing, and that's why the contract was kind of clumsy for our situation, what they're usually doing is the town says, and we, we got a quote from them. Can you redo our handbook? Can you help us hire an I T director? Can you help us hire a town administrator? Can you review all of our policies? And it's one set project with a timeline. What we're doing is a little, I think, from what I understand, a little atypical, where we have them kind of on-call for things as they come up.
Right.
So that being said, it's kind of hard to put a figure and I think nineteen is probably nineteen thousand is more than we need. I sure, I'm sure we could use it if we wanted to, but I think that we could drop that budget because we're not paying someone to be in the office two days a week. We're just basically paying for on-call support.
I, I just, I, I have no idea how much the search itself will cost.
What was her hourly fine, a quarter, her hourly rate?
I think it was one sixty.
It's one sixty, but we pay less when it's associated.
It's the same thing as county council. It's a high hourly rate and you end up using them an hour a week or something on average, so it's a little hard every day.
It's very hard.
A couple hours a week.
I just don't want us to go too low and then, but we have time to change it one way or the other when we get a better sense of what the search might result in.
Yeah, but I mean, that's all this year, right?
Right.
So it doesn't really affect next year's budget.
Oh, point taken.
Yeah. Do you want it, Melissa, could you please just, as long as no one else is opposed to this, just rename it Human Resources Consulting and make it ten thousand in a post for next year, please, thank you.
By the way, we, where did we end up with office assistant select board statutory provisions?
So what, you had some people apply?
I did. My last comment is too, as was that I was holding off to see what we were doing with the town administration's last, whether we have an assistant town administrator or whatever, is why hire someone if the position's gonna change.
Is the post enough?
It's not. It's been paused.
Is it on our website?
As I recall, the people you got, nothing ever worked out.
Two didn't show up.
You had one person, you told them they were qualified.
And then we had an internal consideration, but then we won't pay health insurance or benefit. They're offering health insurance benefit.
No, it's not posted in.
So we have to figure out.
I'm not in favor of paying health insurance benefit off the bat. I do think that when it worked, it was very nice to just have someone who just took the select board minutes and he got that done and there wasn't a lot else going on because it does start to get complicated in time, assuming now, that being said, there's not many people who that works for their schedule. But I, I thought.
Need to just do select for minutes?
Um, I thought it, it, it worked well to just keep that, um, limited regardless of anything else going on in the organization. We always need some, you know.
Although, I mean, I guess all of the board minutes.
A little bit.
Package, but it didn't seem like it makes a difference.
Yeah, I mean, we have volunteers in certain groups that can take minutes and do if they don't have clerical assistance. Some boards want clerical assistance, some don't. I think they all appreciate it. You know, one of the things is with a lot of the stuff that we're talking about going on at select board meetings, uh, holds a lot of weight. You know, the select board over the years has seen by far the most open meeting law complaints with the bynet committee being second. So yes, we want the minutes to be all up to date and we wanna be assisting or volunteer as much as possible. But the select board, I do think first and foremost, because a lot of these are advisory design. So you can have a great advisor to me in the select board, but if the select board isn't functioning well and do anybody needs to do it, it's getting open meeting law complaints, then it doesn't matter how good the advisory committee is.
I think it's gonna be really hard to find some that's willing to just have a three-hour new job. Um, I, I could be wrong, but I'd just like to add, like, for me being in a position, it, it flows much nicer when I'm doing them. I feel things don't get, don't fall through the cracks because this is my reminder, you know, for the minutes, so. Thoughts, and I know at one point you wanted to keep it separate, but I mean, being the, the main person that, you know, works with you guys, this is very helpful for me. That may be person specific though, because I mean, I like, I'm taking the minutes for the O S R P and that's way less weight. But it is, like, I do sometimes miss whatever's being said while I'm busy trying to take notes on whatever was just said. It's, it can be hard and I think it depends on the person. You told me you reported it.
For me, it's a learning, you know, for me, it really works, so.
Yep.
A way for me to remember things.
Well, let's do this. I think that's kind of a waiting discussion. We have the call-in center helping us out. You know, with the town administrator position. I would say, for now, let's not really change those budget lines. And then if something throughout this process moving forward becomes evident that we wanna reorganize. You know, the various administrative positions between office assistant, town administrator, select board secretary, administrative assistant, assistant town administrator. Whatever, then we reflect it in the budget, obviously, but. I think that process needs to lead the way.
Fair. I guess I was thinking, I like, whatever you wanna call it, town secretary, whatever. Thinking of someone that, that would be, be able to serve in the capacity of being the select board secretary, but also be in the capacity of. Being the other base here, carrying some institutional memory. If we're asking the administrator to serve more managerial functions, more, um, grant writing functions, things that. To are better done undisturbed, they could serve as a, a sort of buffer for that person, like, I think that. If someone's, if one or the other is sick, there's still somebody here, right? Like, I just feel like it. There's a reason so many towns have more than one person in the town offices. Ten towns is, in Southern Washington, that's not insignificant, that's most of them, and that doesn't count big town. So, but I know, it's a tou- it's gonna be a tough budget year. Like, I, it's not like I don't know what the financial limitations are and how serious that is. I just feel like if we're making this kind of managerial change from a TA perspective, I'd like to see us make sure that.
There are other hours, because it, you know, there's tasks. And I understand, then you have some redundancy, you have someone here.
But it also means that that person cannot be answering the phone while they're doing some other job. Whether it's going to a conference or writing a grant or whatever, you know? But whatever, okay.
Well, we will, we're not disregarding it, but we'll deal with it with the pro- with the processes as we move forward, and, you know, it's definitely something to ask Mary at future meetings. And because we're not limited to just a recruitment, and we have them for general consulting.
Right.
We can use them as a resource.
That's fair. I, it's just comes down to whether we, we would want to pose that as an option on the special town meeting work, and we don't have to. We could put off that decision until any of them. I get. I just want us to keep it in our head, especially because we don't have either of those. We still have those positions, but we still don't have them filled, and without making any clear guidelines of what we want, it's hard to go forward with them.
My other budget question is, um, council, so you're averaging right now about fifteen hundred dollars a month, so I was gonna suggest dropping it from twenty one to five to two, uh, twenty thousand.
Yeah, that can't be including the composite evaluation.
Uh, I've only got the bills through November.
Yeah, so that's gonna shoot up. Let's just stick with what we have. I don't know how many hours, but that took significantly longer than I expected, and I'm expecting large bill. And things like town meeting, really, if we want Donna to come to special town meeting and annual town meeting, that's like a month and. Of services in a day. So we've been a little bit lighter on our usage, but.
Which is good.
I just wouldn't drop it. It's a hard one to budget for.
It's so hard. But I would agree that, especially if we're doing the bylaw review. At the SDM, it would be smart to have a.
And then the other thing is, I'd like to add, um, for next year, employee appreciation line items, so that they could do more like at the door decorating contest and stuff like that. Where you give out little motivating kind of things and a training line item. Really like to do that, seventy-five hundred dollar one with John Wardman.
Would that be best as a line or a special article?
I was thinking a line, because I always think it would be continuous.
Might not have to be level funded every year, but.
Right.
What's the, I mean, could we fit it into existing line, like? Do we have, do we have different training for different departments, but you, you would just rather it be its own line because it will be for various departments?
Yeah, more transparent and, you know, across the board instead of.
Well, then maybe.
Administrator stuff.
Maybe you just keep human resources the same, the human resources consulting and you, and you count a training like that under human resources consulting.
Yeah, that's a good idea.
It just seems like it gives you.
Gives us flexibility.
That's what I would do, because.
Keep it nineteen.
Otherwise, we're limited to a training versus, you know, paying for an HR consultant, when in reality, they're, they're pretty similar. And then they could be, they don't have to be mutually exclusive.
Where did you have that?
Human resources is on the general government.
No, I'm at the, what, you had, how you had raised it? Yeah, yeah. I remember seeing it, but I don't remember.
Oh, I didn't have it in there yet.
Okay. Oh, was it in email?
Yes.
Okay, sorry. I like that I didn't put it in the human resources.
Yeah. Well, this is what happens. You get the lines.
There's so much specific, I agree.
And you know what, other towns, or at least one other town does, right, is they vote each section of their budget. You don't have to do little transfers.
So I was gonna suggest that this year, but, and I tried to make up a mock one, and it was just. Like, you guys have it so specific on the warrant, like. It would have looked like I was targeting certain departments, you know, it really, it would have, and I, when I tried to do it, I was like, there's no way I could do this without. Offending someone.
When you like collapsed.
When I tried to laugh, so, yeah, and then it was like, you know, what, border cessers, I can't even think of which one I really stumbled on.
Well, I think, you know, we're really pretty specific in this town. Which is probably a good thing in certain ways about transferring between accounts and, and whatnot, but. Other towns also don't, a lot of other towns don't have as many special town meetings, because they just spend from this account and that account. And kind of play with things a little bit more, which isn't good, and I'm not saying we should go in that. Direction, but it has its certain advantages.
Yeah, it's down.
So if we, but the lea- the least thing we can do is keeps our, keep our lines a little bit more broad. Because it's not helpful to anyone to be so particular that it ties our hands. We have money left in one account, and we, we're doing a different transfer request from another, and we're going. These little transfers.
Yeah, you're not gonna get an argument from me on this.
If that wraps up budget, then we'll do a police donation. Motion to accept the police, donation of least permanent amount of five hundred dollars, your second vote. Okay, is there any discussion on the, a motion? We'll call a vote?
Yes.
And yes, so.
And thank you.
Approval. So. We have some. Costs related to the Walker lawsuit, including IT, right? Tom, did Tom submit another bill for?
Just that one, yeah.
But was that from like six months ago or more recently? Okay, yeah, because I, I wanna make sure the one for more recently is, are we done?
He's protecting for me right now, hopefully we don't have somebody.
Okay, and then transportation for the town administrator, and the, 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 the question is just gonna be paid from legal fees and expenses?
Transportation, hospital bill, I'm still working that out with him. I didn't need them today, and they definitely want me to come to Boston.
The lawyers are, they're opposing counsel or?
Not my account.
Okay.
Is there any opposition to that? Then that's a, a green light, so. So transportation, possible hotel, IT. For the Walker lawsuit will come out of legal fees and expenses, which I think makes sense, because it's a legal expense.
Yeah.
Uh, minutes.
Two cents there.
Okay, so we have twelve five.
Twelve five and twelve twelve.
So, before we get too deep into those, while Susan and Frank do.
Yes, first one.
I need to chat with Melissa. So the nine twenty-one and nine twenty-eight, we just can't find approved versions?
I, I only have the ones with the marks in it.
Because.
I don't, I didn't have any version of them.
So I know that we did approve them, uh, because it's in the following minutes.
That's what, I don't even remember writing those, because I wasn't in those meetings.
I know.
So I don't know that.
No, she wasn't hired.
Can you go to ten nineteen on the website? She was hired, this is her.
No, no, I'm talking about the two that there was no meetings anymore, just. Terry and the lawyer.
That's not what I'm concerned about. What I'm concerned about is. Ten nineteen twenty-two.
Ten nineteen, I'm sorry, I thought you said nine twenty-one, ninety-eight.
No, he's saying that at ten nineteen, it says that they were approved.
Oh, okay.
I'll tell you, I know I didn't draft these. And I can't.
And there's, there's actually some errors in the, even with the directions in there.
Did you write the minutes?
I don't think so. Is this, is it signed by me at the bottom?
No, but we approved them on ten nineteen, you were at the ten nineteen meeting, right? Ten nineteen executive session?
And here's why I don't think I wrote them, because I didn't have a copy until she said.
Okay, so it, it does say you approved them as amended, so I'm, I'm guessing that.
At a meeting that you were at and Susan was at, and she, but Scott wasn't there?
Nine twenty-one says submitted by Melissa.
At the bottom, that's.
Yeah. On page six.
Uh, Scott was absent. The ten nineteen minutes were written by Lori.
Both of them say submitted by Melissa. I think you weren't at it, but you used to record it.
Recording, right.
That being said, I think these are approved with just these track changes.
With those track changes?
If, 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 uh, that's, because, so what I had done was for various of these. Melissa, I have, I had copies of the, okay, these aren't released, but I know you have a copy, I have a copy in my email. And it's approved, and so we kept track of them, so, and I guess I stopped that. At a certain point, so I didn't have, like, approved the nine twenty-one or approved nine twenty-eight. But those minutes show that we, and then we, we ended up approving the ten nineteen minutes and releasing them. So there's no way that, like, it was just accidentally put in the minutes, like, it must have been, it, because it would have had to been multiple things.
Why don't I, it says you went into executive session and you, and you approved the minutes. And then you came out and approved those minutes of ten nineteen.
Yeah.
Okay, that's fine, I mean, maybe you guys just wanna take one more look at them and make sure you're okay with the. So I did, I did read them. There's a few, like, errors that were still in there, like, missing spaces or double, there's like, the word bored got. Two people changed it and only one got removed, like, it didn't get removed, so it says board board or something, it's not. They weren't big things, they weren't substantive things, or meaning changing things, it just looks a bit sloppy, I don't know that it's worth. Going back into executive session, it's dangerous.
No, well, so, the idea is we're gonna release these two, so there's no sense in, in, in going into. I forget where we were at last week.
I wasn't sure if you had to release them in order to give them to council for this, because it could still stay part of this. Suit without being public until it's earned in court.
Well, see, David Lawless already has these.
He does.
He has a lot of things that aren't necessary. David Lawless is supposed to have things that are attorney-client privileged.
Right, right.
That are so confidential.
In which case, I don't think it matters, because as long as the attorney has them, if he thinks that he needs to use them. It's like, if he's gonna use them, then he has to give them to opposing counsel, which case both sides will have them.
I don't think he could give them to opposing counsel, that's a temporary deposition.
Ah.
Didn't he tell you in the email that they should be released?
Yeah, so the idea is David Lawless.
Exactly.
Right, okay.
David Lawless has things that aren't public, because they're either attorney-client privileged, or they're otherwise privileged under the public records law.
Gotcha.
However, if they're attorney-client privileged or otherwise privileged.
Right.
I mean, he can do whatever he wants, he could release them.
Right.
But I think he's giving a little bit of deference to the board's decision to not release them.
Well, I'm.
They're a little bit of a gray area with that whole. Purpose one, where Donna has said that it's a, it's a little bit of a gray area with some discretion given to the board. That being said, David Lawless is recommending that we release them.
I didn't know that, because I didn't have an email for it.
I guess I, I thought I mentioned it last week.
Nineteen and twenty-eight.
Nine nineteen, nine twenty-one, twenty-two. I don't have a problem with releasing them, um, but if we don't have to go into executive session, fixing this stupid little boo-boo is what we're gonna.
Yeah, no, we don't have to. Um, I think that we should release them. I, I think, so there's a couple on here. I dropped a.
Yeah, we talked in twenty-one and, oh, on there, yeah.
I worked with Melissa to create a chart of the remaining unreleased minutes. I think in particular, all the ones that aren't released, since I'm on the board, are highlighted, and it says unreleased.
Yep.
So, five seventeen twenty-three, eight thirty-one twenty-two. And six eight twenty-two especially are, well, especially six eight twenty-two.
Five seventeen and which one?
Six eight twenty-two and five seventeen twenty-three were about litigation against the town by the for- by the town clerk. That's ongoing litigation, so we certainly have a reason to withhold those minutes from public release until that litigation's over.
Right.
So, those I don't expect us to release. If we go ahead and release nine twenty-one, nine twenty-eight. Then, there's a few others, like this group of three from October and November twenty twenty-one.
What was the reason for those?
Purpose one.
Purpose one, okay. Is this still tourist one with the clerk?
No. We can get them to you and you can review them.
Okay.
I don't, I don't.
I wasn't on the board, so.
Yeah. Um, eight thirty-one was also not directly about litigation strategy, so that might be potential risk. My term is up in May. I may or may not be on the board after that. I'd like before then, especially if I'm not gonna be on the board, which I don't know. To make sure that all my Ts are crossed, my Is are dotted, and we've released whatever we should.
Okay.
That being said, we're not gonna go ahead and release minutes we have no business releasing.
Yeah.
But I just wanna get everything squared away. For nine twenty-one and nine twenty-eight, we've been advised that we should release them, so like I said, that leaves a limited amount. I think the ones that deal with litigation against the town by the town clerk, obviously, it's ongoing litigation, we'll keep those. Uh, private, um, but then there's, you know, there's a small handful of others that are question marks.
So, tonight, do we wanna have a quick look at twenty-one and twenty-eight, fix any problems with them and go ahead and release them?
Yeah, we've already approved them, but, we've already approved them, but, um, we can't find any approved copies. It looks like my changes are in here, because I'm, I'm noticing certain things that are the kinds of things that I do.
And I, I think my, I think mine are as well, and the reason I think that is. When you see stuff like, where's the board, like, there's both, first of all, there's two colors.
Yeah, okay, so.
And then on top of that, you get like board board.
Well, blue, blue is me.
Right, and I think red is me. Um, I'm trying, there was one where it literally, it might have been in twenty-eight, where it's like, says board board. It, it literally like, we both changed the same thing, and I can fix those.
I thought Scott wasn't at these meetings. No, Scott was at these meetings, he wasn't at. The, either eight thirty-one or ten nineteen, or both, no.
Yeah.
Eight thirty-one, he was at.
These are stupid things, but if you turn off the markup, it still has errors like that. Right, I mean. Voters should have been plural, not a quote, a prostitute, they're little dumb things, like, I don't think it mattered, board boards.
So, I'd be happy to. So I'd be happy to approve these for release, and then if you, Susan, wanna work with Melissa on the typos, I'm fine with that.
Okay. I mean, it, it may not be important enough to bother with, it just looks a little less professional. If we already proved it, we can leave it in. I don't really, I don't feel strongly about needing to clean them up if you don't.
Well, we should, especially if you know about them. I just mean that, that's something I'm completely comfortable with you handling, and Melissa, you and Melissa working on that.
Okay.
Before posting them to the website and making it official.
Okay.
Because the board, the board doesn't need to approve minutes. It could delegate all of its minute approving authority to one member.
Okay.
For instance.
Well, just, I mean, I'm not gonna change anything other than errors or double words or apostrophes where there shouldn't be one or there should be one.
And also, you know, their purpose one, and you know, the issue is, is over, and so that.
And the draft memo that I wrote to accompany, uh, nine, the nine twenty-eight, it says it's attached, so presumably it would be attached, right?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Um, which leads me to the other question I had for you, which is, do I correctly recall on the twenty-eighth, we, you, I and Scott turfed that second list of four things to Sophia. And Sophia, this is what I remember, and I'm trying to check my memory. Sophia met with Terry, and then I got it, we got an email from Sophia about a message she got back from Terry, which I have a copy of.
I don't know.
Okay.
Yeah, I can't remember.
I'm just trying to figure out, did anything ever come with that? Because we asked her for recommendations, and I don't believe we ever got any actual recommendations about those things. And I think what happened is she was getting ready to do it, and then the clerk chose to resign, and so nothing ever came with it. But you don't remember anything about it?
I can look through my emails. If you have, like, a specific request of, like, emails I got from Sophia or from the town clerk or sent.
I'm looking to see if there was ever a document. No, no, I'm looking to see if there was ever a document produced by Sophia with regard to the items that were on the agenda for nine twenty-eight, the four things listed in that, um, in those meeting minutes. I don't think that ever happened. I don't, I couldn't find a document about it. I don't recall having received a document about it. But I wanted a second opinion from someone who was there as to whether we ever did get such a document.
Well, I'll tell you this, the way that Sophia operated, it's very unlikely that I got something that you didn't get.
But just because I can't find it, doesn't mean it's not.
I did just look through her, all her sent things. I don't see, the last thing I saw in relation to that was that she met with her, and then Terry filed a complaint against her.
Right.
So I'm guessing she did nothing.
Okay.
Any attachments.
That's what I recall as well, so.
And, and to me, like, for recall memory, it's all blurred. I couldn't have told you the timeline or anything, or when Scott came on, or what.
It's a blur for me too. It makes me feel better that, that you say that about something, because, like, then I know, oh, that's not just because I'm sixty-one. And, and it's a complicated situation. I only remember as much as I do, because I was just plowing through all of Scott. And then I'm like, wait, did this exist and I don't have it? Paranoia. Okay, so, uh, we're gonna release the nine twenty-one and the nine twenty-eight. Do we need to vote on that?
Yeah, so this is how I'm gonna make a motion. I'm gonna move, um, that the minutes of the executive session meeting of September twenty-first, twenty twenty-two, five thirty PM, be, um, approved pending any final edits by Susan, and then released to the public. Is there any questions about that that makes sense?
That makes sense to me.
You don't have to abstain. You can vote on, you can vote on minutes that you weren't present at the meeting for. That being said, you can also abstain, because that's fairly typical, but you, you can vote on any vote that's made by the board, including minutes of meetings that you weren't at. And we don't have to approve minutes by the whole board or by a vote of the board. We can delegate that, which. Okay, so we'll vote on the motion to approve the executive session minutes of September twenty-first, twenty twenty-two at five thirty PM, pending any final edits by Susan, and releasing those same minutes to the public.
Second. Yes, I'm voting yes.
And I'll vote yes, and Frank abstains. So it's two votes in the affirmative, and the motion carries. And Susan will finalize those minutes, and they'll be released to the public.
Now I gotta do the same thing?
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, so the minutes of nine twenty-eight, which are fairly short. Did you have any typos on this one?
This one does not look like it had shortcuts.
Yeah, it's short.
Yeah, maybe.
Yeah, so that being said, maybe I'll just make essentially the same motion, minus.
Right, yeah.
So I would move to approve the executive session minutes of September twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-two, six PM meeting, and simultaneously release those minutes to the public.
I'll second.
Is there any discussion on that? We'll call a vote?
Yes.
And yes.
Abstain.
And abstain. So that's two votes in the affirmative, one abstention, the motion carries. And those minutes are approved and, and released to the public. Okay, as far as any other minutes, I will, because I'm, I'm a little bit curious about August thirty-first. Let's not handle it tonight, but Melissa, I might ask you for it if I don't have it.
The actual minutes?
Yeah, because I know the other two say they're about litigation, and that that's ongoing. But that one is, does not say it's about litigation, so it might be ready to release. I don't know. I haven't looked at it. But that, we can deal with.
You did approve those.
Yeah, I mean, but we also had approved the other two.
I've got a draft, but not a file for the end.
Can you just send them to me, and then I'll take a look, and we'll, we'll see where we're at, and maybe I'll consult time help, so if I feel it's necessary. I just recognize, I just had pulled down the motion while we entered executive session, and it seemed like if any word, you know. Okay. We actually jumped ahead a little bit in the agenda, but we'll go to the minutes of, no, of December fifth.
Do you even know offhand which color's which?
They did open.
And blue.
You're blue, okay.
No.
Hey, I knew it. Frank said it's blue.
I'm blue and red.
The first change, which says which can be found as a document, that's Justin.
But I'm also, last, last week's meeting. So I'm also blue.
Uh, last week's meeting, and the word meeting was. Uh, I know meeting was mine too.
Oh, meeting.
Maybe we just both need it.
Meeting is Susan, yeah.
But I know I need it too.
Frank just, um, highlighted today.
Okay, gotcha, but the other, but the blue.
The bluish ones are Justin.
So Frank said, I read from the statement, which I, uh, the statement is gonna be a document attached to the meeting.
Okay.
So.
So it's available.
I did pare it down a bit.
You were saying that?
No, not the statement. That doesn't change. But I did pare down this section a bit.
Yeah, you did.
Uh, but if anyone feels like there's things that need to be included, that I took out.
So I'm okay with all the ones on page one and two, um, I think this must be, on page three, I think this is you, Frank. It says Frank acknowledged Kim, Kim comments. I think it probably should be acknowledged Kim's apostrophe S comment, but pointed out there are people that feel differently. Instead of different, um, and it's an awkward situation for the town, yeah.
So it's acknowledged Kims and differently.
Yep, and the, yeah.
That's all I have. Page one, I just, we all tried to attack how I, uh, read a statement. I would just suggest that we go with how I said it, which was mostly just using Melissa's original draft.
So.
I think we all just went for the same thing.
Yeah, read, read what you think it should read.
Just everything that's there, but not the comments.
Okay.
In that first sentence, Justin acknowledged that there were significant motions made at last week's meeting and read a statement, which can be found in the document used at this meeting, to inform everyone where the board is currently at.
Yeah, it's just you're not supposed to end with a preposition, Justin. That's why I said to explain the board's current thinking.
Yeah.
Because currently at is.
Okay.
A little excessively colloquial.
We'll go with Susan's comment.
Instead of inform everyone where the board is currently at, it would read, explain the board's current thinking, my comment.
You went near the grammar.
Yeah, sorry. Grammar Nazi. Sorry, that's a Seinfeld.
Yeah, I just kind of, I, what, I subscribe to grammar to a certain degree.
You generally do. You're, you're usually, yeah.
But I don't, I don't like how they say, don't start a sentence with a "but."
I, I definitely don't do that one. And I am all in favor of splitting infinitives. I actually think it can sound better. It adds a different emphasis.
What is splitting infinitives?
To boldly go. Instead of to go boldly, or boldly to go.
We're here, no, all right.
I like starting sentences.
Yeah, we're almost gonna be on an hour.
All right, so with that one, with those two changes, you know, a motion approved the amended minutes of December fifth, twenty twenty-three.
I'll second.
Yes, we'll call a vote, yes, 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 for me, it's unanimous approval. If you put your initials there, we'll get that to Susan and then Melissa, and then we'll attack both.
First changes are Justin.
Yep.
I must be blue. Yeah, I'm crossing off something I said, except it's red.
You come up with red on mine.
Oh, goodness. That is so weird that the picture, the color on the screen is not the color on the document. I don't understand that.
So.
And I'm red on mine. Maybe red is what the first one is? Maybe they're color-coded, which, what does it, it's all just first, and then nothing.
Well, I'm red.
Yes, and here you are. But look, this is my, like, just has mine.
Your word doesn't work.
No, it's, it's red in mine too.
I think.
Even though, and I printed it from mine, but it shows up.
And so I think what happens is it color codes them according to whichever it drops first, like, maybe the first person to make a, make a comment gets red?
I wish I didn't know this much about track changes in Word.
Yeah, right.
Um, it is gonna get a little tricky on, on the transition of page one to two. We got two people.
Making comments.
Yeah, if there are three, you're gonna see a purple. Maybe purple, just we both need it. Susan provided a preliminary list of items which can be found as a document used at the meeting. The board should be addressing exeditiously if they wish, wish to proceed.
Where, where?
Susan, that was the last thing on page one.
Oh.
And then, and then I think we could just get rid of the red there. And then, and then I think we could just get rid of the red there, because I think it's Susan explaining Susan's point of view.
Yeah.
Susan objected strongly to using reserve fund transfer to allow the board to offer a higher TA salary. We use a clear mandate from time meeting as appropriate course for the board to take. Justin would feel comfortable asking for a transfer of up to $5,000. Justin said that this is unfortunate expense. So I would just take the red stuff out of your sentence. Justin understood Susan's point about the use of the, what he said, but said to you.
Yeah, if you take, yeah.
Even though I did under, and do understand your, your point, that, that's not essential.
Okay, how would you have it, so I, I deleted that first. Keeping the blue deletion? I'm asking if this is what you're suggesting, that it would be, how that, okay.
Susan objected strongly to using reserve fund transfer to allow the board to.
Basically what I had written.
Basically what you had written, I don't know, my thing was.
You were probably fixing something else, I don't know, I'm not gonna worry about it. It works out, man.
No. But you're right. The donation.
Donation.
It was gonna be nine A. Just got jumbled up with two people commenting on it.
Now, now you, you had something on page three?
Yeah, each seamless in notes, a motion was made to accept the donation, donation as it proposed. Oh yeah, because it's above his list. And then nine A, Dennis Lynch wanted to confirm that the board understood that up to $35,000 of our funds might be used as match for the cultural council feasibility study grant.
Right.
Yeah, I don't know why it got jumbled.
When we both try to fix something, that often happens. I'm just looking at seven. Okay.
I just thought it'd be good, because different people over the years, I mean, this has come up again and again.
Again and again.
So I just wanted, okay, this is it.
Yep, and I'd like that you have the citation in there too.
There's one person in particular who, that's brought up a couple times in the conversation, but I don't know if he knows that that is there. I didn't know for two years. Two and a half years, well, through 25 years.
Okay. So, do you have anything in there?
Motion to approve the December 12th, 2023 minutes as amended.
I'll second.
Is there any other discussion? We'll call a vote.
Yes.
And yes, so that's unanimous approval. Uh, 1219 I didn't get to, but, enough for next week. 1128, executive session.
If you didn't, uh, do them, I mean, I don't know if we wanna do this or not, but if you didn't do them, should I just send you mine?
Did I not send them to you?
Yeah, sorry about that.
I sent what, the 1219? What?
Or the 1219?
Yeah, yeah.
I didn't do it, but I sent 1119.
I did edit, should I just send them to you? Because sometimes we do that because we've already brought it up and it's on the agenda, but we don't have to, we can just do it the normal way and do it next week. We're not on the time gun or anything, so, I don't look there.
Yeah, but send them all to me.
It's only one.
Did you do edits?
Oh no, I haven't, I haven't.
Well then, Susan, I drafted them, you made your edits, you sent them to Frank. Now Frank, now they've been approved by two people.
Wait, no, this isn't the executive session, I'm talking about the last meeting minutes.
Oh.
1219.
Yeah.
1219.
Let's not get too complicated.
Okay, then let's stick, then let's do the executive session.
Yeah.
Do we, uh, if we're doing executive session minutes though, don't we have to do a second session?
Um, the thought was that they'll be released, so it's time to move point.
Okay.
Do you have 11?
Uh, 28 minutes?
Did you have a lot of changes, Frank?
No.
You don't have any?
So the only thing I wanted to change was, I don't like, check. So I proposed instead, so it's this, um, probably on the first page, there's a three numbered things that Justin said, and then the second paragraph after that. All members of the board agreed that if a new contract were to be negotiated with Melissa as a town administrator, it should, and this is my proposed change, be associated with a job description that more clearly states what authority the TA is granted and makes clear the performance areas we believe need to be improved.
Okay.
I don't know what that means, right, like I, it's too big.
So, that being said, if that's the only, did a good job. If that's the only change which I'm favorable to, Frank's favorable to, I would make a motion to approve the minutes as amended and they're approved and to release them to the public.
I started the motion.
Is there any other discussion, we'll vote?
Yes.
And yes, so that's unanimous approval. So, Melissa, or Susan, can you please just send that to Melissa, the final version? And then, I think there's one document listed, which is something that I have. Which I will, might as well send right now.
You're gonna send me that on YouTube?
Yes, which will not fit in emails, so I'll have to use a flash drive. Yeah, I got a flash drive. Thank you. Audio.
Okay.
I tried to email it and it just, it's too big. I'm having a, mistaken second to find it. I understand your pain. Okay, I just sent them to, hopefully it's the right, okay. Yeah. So I will hide the. Okay. What else did I get? Do we have unanticipated business?
Um, two things, our insurer sent me something the other day, I guess they have a new policy that their risk management group does many evaluations and they only used to do them on buildings that were over a million and now they're doing it on all buildings. Due to that, they have assessed the or appraised the library at a much higher cost. So you're gonna owe another two thousand eight hundred and twenty-three dollars for remainder of this year.
How much?
Two thousand eight hundred and twenty dollars.
Wow.
Five thousand six hundred and forty-six this year twenty-five, she said that basically it came down to the updated per square foot rates of replacing the building if it something catastrophic were to happen and we had to replace it, she said right now our current coverage would leave us paying for a nice chunk of change.
What is, what are the figures?
Um, what's the new appraisal?
No.
One million six hundred and sixty-six thousand nine hundred, if you guys accept it, it says five thousand six hundred and forty-six in here, I just need you to sign it, but we're gonna she totally just cross it off and say that we're gonna pay twenty twenty-three, because this is actually for the whole year. Since we're not actually.
But is that for the remainder of this year?
Twenty twenty-three, yes.
But you can't beat insurance companies, and last year halfway through your my auto insurance just said, oh, it costs more.
Twenty twenty-four dozen.
But it paid for the year, so you can't beat insurance companies, but I also wonder.
She said.
Can we say, you know, that this isn't what we paid for it and can we try to fight it?
So in her conversation with me today, we we don't have to do it.
Yeah.
But if the building.
We just got less of it burns down?
Yeah.
Right.
That's all.
What is she saying the value is now?
Say on the corner.
One point six.
Uh, one, one point six million.
Cause it crossed the road top two, two million, two million dollars.
I know they get the fire.
They're suggesting it to two hundred and twenty-eight dollars per square replacement cost, which is probably accurate.
So basically, if we don't take this, building burns, we just get less money. And in reality, they find some way to not give us the money anyway, because you forgot to sign this page.
It's optimistic.
I was gonna say, he must have just had a claim or something.
I also find it interesting, it says year built nineteen thirty-one. Um. So what, this is for the, for calendar year twenty twenty-four?
That right would be for a full, no fiscal year.
Full year.
For a full fiscal year.
We could July to June, but obviously they just sent this to me.
Okay, but I am just asking, are they asking us to increase it retroactively for the previous year that's almost like halfway done?
No, she's saying that we'll cut that in half and only pay for January, June.
Ah, gotcha, okay.
I think that we should probably consult the finance committee in the library and just.
So the additional premium will be half of this additional premium?
So.
Twenty eight, twenty.
Twenty hundred, yeah.
Susan, I feel like.
You bet. It does, only four hundred square feet is big.
Were they, so they just went up, they knew the square footage, but they just went up in the price per square foot for you though?
Right. Based on, you know, current um actual prices for.
Did it affect other buildings?
She said, yes, the fire company, um, they didn't come here.
Uh, I told, we think it was something we talked about today. They don't have enough to cover the building now, they're working on building number.
Right, so the 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 library must have been, I think it was only nine hundred and sixty before, she said that the appraisers that they use, which is an independent company, never used to do buildings under a million, and now they're doing all buildings.
Oh, but that building is.
Or Susan.
The whole construction project is, but the building itself wasn't, like, so if it if it burned down, you wouldn't have to replace the septic and all that stuff that ended up making it.
Ah, okay, gotcha.
But now they're saying that the actual building is more than.
Gotcha.
Right, so I'll send, I'll send that to.
But I mean, pretending, you know, it kind of raises the question, if one of the buildings they didn't audit burns down, then we're just hanging out to dry?
Yes.
Yeah, I don't know, I hate.
It's an interesting question, is there a specific square footage replacement cost in the existing contract?
Well, so it, I don't, I don't have the answer to that, but I do know that Sean fought them pretty hard, because I think they gave a number for the fire company that was maybe this two thirty-six, and he said he was a builder, that absolutely would not replace up here, so yeah, she wanted them to increase the the building.
Uh, yeah, so one of the things we brought earlier on in, I'm like, that's, you know, what is the value, how much insurance do they have on the building? And they're working through that now, so.
So he was saying that he wanted to even hire?
He wanted to hire, yeah, because the actual replacement.
Or because the square place cost is not realistic.
Right.
I mean, construction costs are just through the roof.
So then you pay more, you never would pay more, building burns down. They don't cover it.
Well, you look at, look at, you don't even wanna get into policies in Florida for a house.
Hurricane?
Oh, hurricane, so it's, you know, the storm, two different storms on two different days, you know, they're not one time in a summer time.
Anyway, now if you go into a tangent, but can you please send it to library, board, and finance committee?
And then the other thing is the fire chief asked me to let you guys know that um he will not be pursuing the community compact efficiency legalization grant as originally proposed, I guess Susan may have some conversations with Collins and, and they've they've advised him to not apply for that this year.
And which one was that for?
The shared emergency services personnel.
Between the, oh, you're gonna have during the day, right?
Yeah. Any, any uh further?
He didn't really give me too much, or just said they advised him not to do it this year. I guess they're working on a project with them about fire pay and stuff.
Oh, okay. Interesting.
Yeah. And I, at the moment, I don't have something else, but I'll, I'll think if there, I'll try to think if there's something else we can apply for, if we still have a little bit of time.
Uh, I'm sure. Cause they have a lot of different avenues to go, right?
The community compact.
Yeah, what about I T?
That one's already closed, but this is the efficiency.
So like the, some of the community contracts are closed?
Yeah, the I T one is still closed, this one opens January eighth and closes February ninth, and this is to provide financial support for government entities interested in implementing regionalization or other efficiency initiatives that allow for long-term sustainability.
So can we only apply for one community compact per year?
No, you can apply for each of the different ones. I can't remember which one, if it's this one, one of them is only every two years.
Okay.
We're eligible this year, we missed the deadline for the I T one.
Okay.
If you have an idea, let me know, but um.
Well, I just remember looking and it it seemed like everything under the sun had its own grant.
Yeah, this could be regionalization, internal efficiencies, small capital purchases or improvements that are integral to the implementation of a functional program, technical assistance including consulting services, transition or project management costs not to exceed one year.
Okay, so like project management on the M V P Culbert would be acceptable because that's.
More than a year.
More than a year out. What about with project management on the Barretown Mountain Road or the Curtis Bridge be redundant and not helpful? Because Jim and you already have them under control?
Curtis Road is all being paid for by the state, you know, we're not gonna owe anything on that, was that when you said Barretown?
I was saying more project, I thought like hiring a project manager. I don't know, I don't, I'm just.
Yeah, let me give it some thought.
Throwing ideas out?
Yep.
Okay, and I know we'll we'll figure it out on the other, on the other side, but does anyone, I had something come up that I could do Monday that I would like to do. Does anyone wanna do my budget meetings that are in the morning on Monday?
Yeah, yeah, vote come up for me, I I've got a ten o'clock, but I know they're not double scheduled, so I probably could.
I have myself down for nine A M. to noon, but I don't think it's continuous.
Oh, it is.
It is.
Whatever.
I thought I got a great.
Nine to nine thirty is the council and the agent.
I have to do one of that more.
Okay, I think we'll do it then.
Can you send me the schedule?
All of them, yeah. I mean, we can divide it up, what else is, so the nine, nine thirty is steward, nine thirty to nine forty-five is the assessors, nine forty-five to ten is the board of health, ten to ten fifteen is the tree warden, ten fifteen to ten forty-five is compound, ten forty-five is the cemetery, ten eleven is the planning board, and eleven fifteen is parks. You were supposed to bring down once.
Yeah. That means you have to, one of you two.
Well, I I come, you don't ask the other meetings, I won't turn it to you.
I was gonna say, if you want, I'll do nine to through the tree warden and you can do concom for parks.
Which is what, concom is ten?
You see, you're tree warden anyway.
No, that, I mean, I know, but it would be the ones before.
So you'll do, you'll do from nine to ten, and then I do concom and.
Nine, nine to ten fifteen, and then you you take over with concom.
That's it?
Well, you.
That concom cemetery, planning board and park, so we'd each get four. Right, you'd be ten fifteen to basically noon.
Okay, alright.
Right, I'll send you those tomorrow.
Thank you.
Some of them I don't have, the night response, but yeah, the board of health is not responding yet, cemetery is not, planning. I know Michael said, wait, Michael fits that thing today.
Who's, uh, board of health and board of assessors wanted to.
For you?
So yeah, send me that schedule, send me the schedule so I know I'm on, and then I'll put it in properly.
So one thing for whoever does parks, I know I I asked someone else to do it, and then I put them on two cents, but for someone who does parks is they have a really good sense from the past couple of years of what they need to do to keep the beach open and everything. What they're doing is actually really kind of nice by providing a la carte everything else. That being said, like Melissa said, it really shouldn't be a special article for an A E D sign, but I do think some of those things deserve serious discussion. I was there for the discussion about taking care of the plants down at Bigwell Park. A lot of money to take care of plants at Bigwell Park, I understand the goal of native plants and all this, but I seriously wonder if that and putting up signs at the Brewer Pond Trail should be covered by the concom fund? Because it seems like right up their alley, we're pretty limited on what we can spend that concom fund on, and we can't spend it.
Right.
Only the concom can. But you would figure if the concom made the trail with that money, they'd also be fine with putting signage up with that money, which is what I thought was gonna happen, and I think I can't think of a better use for that money, if it was supposedly made to preserve lakes and water sheds and whatnot, than using it.
Both of those things, yeah.
To keep native plants maintained in Bigwell Park, because the whole purpose of the native plants is to maintain the.
The stream bed.
Stream bed.
Yeah, and, yeah.
So if, and we're still limited with that money, it has to be on town property, we can't use it on B N R C. or modern preservation land trust properties. You know, it seems like that really makes a lot of sense, why don't they go to the concom for it? Are you wanting to be at parks?
I think that Frank's gonna be at parks, but I totally agree with your reasoning. Yeah, I was taking the morning ones and parks.
Still, I see Jerry, right?
Yeah, so I, they haven't seen it yet, but they basically have eleven thousand five hundred dollars and they're calling them capital, but I don't think it calls it a capital, I'm not suggesting they move it into there, other than maybe the electrical service. It doesn't fall under our definition of.
But I. They've been split on that for years, and I don't think they really want it, so the question is, do we want an electrical service at the beach for five thousand dollars?
Then you got a monthly charge, right?
Right, it's, it's not going.
You can shut it down in August, or September, you're still gonna pay a monthly fee.
So. If you want me to sell it to you, every time we rent a generator for festivities, generators aren't cheap. But I don't, I don't, I don't agree with that, but that's just.
Yeah, but what do they want the power for?
Uh, events, like every time we rent a generator to have a bouncy house and whatever, which is not frequently, it's not a good year once a year.
Yeah, but it's a big hair roll, yeah.
Yeah, I guess, but you should know that they were told they shouldn't rent that bouncy house, but insurance doesn't cover it.
Yeah. So I know.
I'm like, yeah.
So that killed your generator right there.
Insurance.
They, they did it on their own, although they, I, they were told not to.
It's a big brother comes and goes.
So, but, but anyway, that being said, if you look at it from a financial point of view, let's say we go behind the insurance back and get the bouncy house.
You don't say that in the public, do you?
It's just to inflate it, right?
There might be, yeah, and we should have a flag.
No, but there are, there are the.
There's other reasons, what if you had a band?
You know, shit.
And they needed, and they needed um electricity to run the P A system or.
And so call up a, an electrician or ask Jerry what it costs
He wasn't like.
to rent a generator for a weekend that can power a band. It's not cheap, and all of a sudden, five thousand dollars doesn't look like a whole lot of money.
And then why you gotta get the fuel to the generator, right?
No, but they're asking to install a service, not a generator.
Yeah, right, yeah.
You know, he, he was just saying that it it costs to rent the generator and the fuel generator is even more, so that's.
Yeah. So a long story short, if you're gonna be using it once a year and you're spending a thousand dollars on a generator, I don't, and we have discussed.
Well, we can, we can do the numbers and see what it says.
Yeah, do the numbers.
Oh, it's like national grid of years, you're out there anyway.
Well, and I'm not so sure, I mean, would they need a pole or anything, cause they need a pole?
No, because I don't think that they do, because Verizon already has a phone line going to the shed.
So if it's Verizon, but it's not a shared pole, then they wouldn't need a national grid.
But the lines go right past.
I'm just asking, I'm.
No, well, Melissa's right, like sometimes say you put an arco on the other side of the road.
If there's too many on there, if they need to.
I, I don't think so, and I think that that price is pretty, um, they got an electrician to come out and say, Jerry, it may even be the case, don't quote me, it may even be the case that the electrical wire comes to the shed already.
That would be, yeah.
But it's only service is just really expensive, so there's that.
Yep, you want one person in town.
Okay, any other questions?
Uh, did you see Peter, he wants to send an email?
Five emails. Um, I'm, I understand where he's coming from, but as it's not really an open meeting law concern, because you should just be emailing about scheduling and sharing documents, and what could happen is, as far as the town retaining those documents, they could be forwarded to the renewable energy working group email account, even if they're sent from personal emails. But look, if someone really doesn't wanna do business on their personal email, which I can completely see why they don't, and it's a, it's a deal breaker, and they're volunteering in that capacity, I would buy it for them with the art of money.
I mean, I, you know.
Seventy dollars a year.
Yeah.
Per person.
So.
Per person.
I think if we talk.
I told them they should just create a Gmail account. Just create generic renewable energy working group.
But don't they have R E W G at modern at man?
They do.
So what they should be doing, it's not an open meeting law concern either, it's a public records concern.
Right, I told him it was two things, I, he had concerns about sharing stuff with them, and I made, I told him, you know, you can only share agenda items and documents that they weren't created by one of you, you know, like if, if you, as you can author a document and then send it to everybody and say, you know, we're gonna look at this, give me your comments. So he, he did say he was gonna give everybody access to the renewable energy working group email, and that they could all just log on and.
Well, it's, but it's more simple, yeah, because they just need to, if ever they're emailing about scheduling and documents, they just need to include R E W G in the email.
Yeah.
So they don't need no login, they don't need to do that, that takes care of public records.
Well, it does and it doesn't, if they have other communications, if they don't include renewable energy, if somebody forgets.
Well, but they should, I mean, it's like in the same way they could forget, you know, a lot of people have multiple emails on their phone, you forget you used the wrong email.
Or if somebody, so like demands, since we're, this last one we just had where people were communicating with you on your private one, he had to include all those because.
Yeah, but that could happen regardless of how many town, you could give them a town email, town cell phone, town birth certificate,
Right.
and they could still have someone contact them.
I agree, I'm, I'm against them having separate emails, I think it's just, it's a waste.
Well, I'll talk to Peter, I'll talk to Peter, and if it's, but if someone says, you know what, I don't want on my personal, and this is a deal breaker, and I'm only gonna volunteer if I get my own email, I'd probably say sure, and we have the money from ARPA, and if it, if it's someone who's in a role and, and they want that, then I can see where they're coming from, because I wouldn't wanna serve in this role if I didn't have a town email, and I know it's different.
I would want for this, but I have to say, I'm on the Z B A, it goes to my personal email, and, and maybe because it's just not a vast volume, it's pretty small volume, so it doesn't bother me that it goes there.
But is it, in everything that the Z B A deals with, lawyers are always involved?
Except that the emails are usually, they're not, there's not any back and forth.
They're distributing documents, schedules.
Right, they're just, yeah, exactly, they're literally, it's nothing of interest, oh, the only other thing would be when we have, when we're checking off on, we call the final document that has our, what, wherever we decided, and you just have to, you know, you're asked to just read it and make sure, and then come in and sign it, I read it, I come in and sign it, I don't comment on it. It's sent out because the board chair writes it up and sends it to all of us so we can come in and sign it, but I just read it, come in and sign it, like there's, or if there's changes that they need to be made, I send them to Melissa, just like we do with our minutes. I don't send it back to the board.
I'll talk to Peter, if someone's really insistent about getting any, we'll have to have that discussion, but probably be in favor of.
I just think that it's a lot, like I don't think that all members necessarily need to have it.
Well, we're gonna, maybe there's one or two that really.
Yeah, and I'm okay with that, I just think like, how, I, I mean, if we start doing it for every single person that serves on any.
Well, it's not a rule, it's not a rule, it's a, you know, it's an accommodation.
Yeah.
Accommodation, and most people don't want another email, and they wouldn't use it, but it's an accommodation, and it's an accommodation that I completely understand.
Yes, I do.
Because, like I said, I wouldn't, with this way that things are, if I didn't have a town email, forget it, so.
Yeah, and there, I just get too much stuff on the other ones, it is, like everything would get buried.
Okay.
So.
Alright, well, I'll talk to Peter, come back to that, any other unanticipated business?
No, I don't have any, I'm sorry.
Okay.
Happy New Year, guys.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
We'll vote on the motion to adjourn.
Yes.
Yes.
And yes, unanimous, meeting adjourned at seven forty-two.